I had to get my Macs. I'd like to call this meeting of the City Commission to order. And as is our habit, we like to begin with a moment of silence. So if those in the audience can join us in a moment of silence. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
...to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
And before I ask for the roll call, I'd like a motion to excuse Commissioner Perdue.
Support.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Perdue is off at a conference for the public's information. So City Clerk, if you could call the roll. Commissioner Asasi.
Present.
Commissioner Knight.
Present.
Commissioner Robbins.
Present.
Commissioner Kilgore.
Present.
Commissioner Belcheck.
Present.
And Mayor LaGrand.
Present.
And if our interpreter could come up and explain in Spanish their role. We have an interpreter to translate to Spanish for those who need help. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for coming. We're here to provide interpretation for the city commissioning. Gracias por estar aqui esta noche. Estamos complacidos de dar interpretación para esta comision esta noche. Gracias.
Thank you. And next is approval of our minutes from our previous meeting. I take a motion.
So moved.
Support.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. That brings us to petitions and communications. Mr. Clerk. Communication received from Kevin Brant regarding his resignation from the Michigan Street Corridor Improvement Authority. Referred to committee on appointments. Communication received from Nicole McClure regarding FOIA appeal request number 2025-2584. Received and filed. Communication received from Ryan Kilpatrick regarding his resignation from the Board of Zoning Appeals. Referred to committee on appointments. Communication received from Kara Gates resignation from the Economic Development Corporation and Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. Referred to committee on appointments. Communication received from Daryl Herwires resignation from the North Corridor Improvement Authority. Referred to committee on appointments. Communication received from Emma Garcia regarding John Ball Zoo operation and maintenance. Received and filed. Communication received from Kelvin Holtrop regarding city ordinances and public spaces. Received and filed. Communication received from Genesis Nonprofit Housing Corporation regarding the appointment of Chris Bennett to the position of CEO. Received and filed. Communication received from Al Jolcher regarding the October 21, 2025 City Commission meeting and the discussion around Wealthy Street. Received and filed. Communication received from Dan Hibman Land and Company regarding housing in the city of Grand Rapids. Received and filed. Three communications expressing support for the Wealthy Street redesign project. Received and filed. One communication received expressing opposition to the Wealthy Street redesign project. Received and filed. Communication received from Jim Davis, Vice President of Business Development with Family Promise West Michigan, including feedback on the city of Grand Rapids Fiscal Year 2026-2030 Consolidated Housing and Community Development Plan. Received and filed. (cough) Excuse me. Communication received from Jim Starkey regarding pedestrian safety. Received and filed. And finally, communication received from Scott Atchison regarding an information center. Received and filed. Thank you. This brings us to report of city officers. First one is a comptroller's warrant report for the period of October 7, 2025 through November 3, 2025, in the amount of $98,685,247.89 and the monthly travel report. Received and filed. And the treasurer's report for the period of October 8, 2025 through November 4, 2025. Received and filed. That brings us to our consent agenda for those in the audience to refresh their memories. We pass on, in a block, things which came out of committee unanimously and which no commissioner felt needed to be brought up again at this meeting for further discussion. So it's possible that we could pass something unanimously out of committee, but any member of the commission could ask for further discussion in this meeting. So I'd ask for a motion to pass our consent, for our consent agenda.
All moved?
Support.
All in favor of the consent agenda passing, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. That brings us to, since no items were removed from consent this cycle, that brings us to proposed ordinances. And City Clerk, if you want to introduce this. Yeah, the first ordinance is an ordinance amending section 4.2 and 4.3 of ordinance 2025-22, new classifications intelligent transportation systems technician and fire hazard inspector two, and range changes for mechanical inspector one, mechanical inspector two, and fire hazard inspector one. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
And Commissioner Kilgore.
Thank you, Mayor. The Mobile GR Department, in addition to the Building Inspections Department, would like approval on amending these positions to make sure they are up to date and replacing the out-of-date descriptions and classifications.
And, okay, any discussion by my colleagues? Seeing none, this needs a roll call vote, so Mr. Clerk. Commissioner Belcheck.
Yes.
Commissioner Kilgore.
Yes.
Commissioner Asasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Mayor LaGrand. Yes, motion passes. Can I have a motion for immediate effect?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Brings us to our next ordinance, Mr. Clerk. This is an ordinance amending section one of the budget ordinance 2025-11 for fiscal year 2026 amendment number four. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Commissioner Robbins.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. These items came before our fiscal committee here this morning. I'll just highlight them very briefly. First item being the Engineering Department requesting to recognize and appropriate a community grants program from the United States Environmental Protection Agency. Number two, also with the Engineering Department, is the recognition and appropriation of a grant from Michigan's Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, also known as Eagle. And then, next item is some improvements to the Grand River East Riverfront for Phase One, and that's a grant being recognized and appropriated from the MEDC. Item number four is for the 61st District Court. It's a grant being received from Michigan's Drug Court Grant Program for drug sobriety court programming. Next item for the Police Department is the reception of an auto theft prevention authority grant. Next one for the Police Department, as well as a continuation of an Office of Highway Safety Planning grant as well. And then, lastly back for the 61st District Court again, is the recognition and appropriation of a grant, also from the Office of Highway Safety Planning, for a sobriety court expansion program.
Thank you. Any discussion, colleagues? Seeing none, again, a roll call votes need here. Mr. Clerk. Commissioner Kilgore.
Yes.
Commissioner Asasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Belcheck.
Yes.
Mayor LaGrand.
Yes, motion carries. Can I have a motion for immediate effect?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
This brings us to yet another ordinance. City Clerk. Ordinance amending Article 5, Chapter 7, Title 1 of the Grand Rapids City Code pertaining to the police and fire retirement system in accordance with the collective bargaining agreement for the period of July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2028. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Thank you. Commissioner Asasi.
Thank you, Mayor. This item is from the contract adoption from our Grand Rapids Police Officers Association for both Officer and Sergeant and Command Unit. It's related to a pension escalator and the need that the respective pensions must be amended. Essentially, there was a change, and this is going to be applied to, will be applied after five years of retirement for those who retire on or after July 1. This became clear that we needed to review this, and it just clarifies who, which groups receive which escalator, and also the timing of those aforementioned escalators for those that are in that retirement system, July 1, 2025. This has been reviewed with the executive director of a retirement system, as well as the system's actuaries, so it's really to clean up this item. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or discussion, colleagues? Seeing none, this is again a roll call vote, so City Clerk. Commissioner Asasi.
Yes.
Commissioner Robbins.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Belcheck.
Yes.
Commissioner Kilgore.
Yes.
Mayor LaGrand.
Yes, can I have a motion for immediate effect?
So moved.
Support.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
This brings us to the next portion, which is City Commission Resolutions. Our first resolution, these are colloquially sometimes referred to as walk-on items, sometimes in the interest of time and to move things forward, we have to suspend rules about notice and timing so that we can take immediate action. So can I, the next item, I'd ask for a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Support.
Okay, and City Clerk, if you could introduce. All in favor. Oh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Yeah, the resolution is a resolution approving a professional services contract with Mosaic Public Partners to conduct an executive search for the city attorney position in an amount not to exceed $32,500. Thank you. Commissioner Knight.
Well, the exact same thing that he just said.
Exactly. Exactly. So, just so the public knows, in order to do a full and robust search to make sure that we're really doing a good examination of all candidates for this really important job that our deputy city attorney has stood in, is our acting city attorney, but we're throwing sort of a national search out for this process. And so this is a proposal that we hire Mosaic Public Partners, and our city manager has previous experience with them and is well acquainted with their reputation. We got a presentation about them this morning, and the amount here is $32,000 or so, and as Commissioner Asasi pointed out earlier in the day, that's in keeping with similar amounts that's caused us to do similar searches in the past. So we're going to engage Mosaic so that we can move forward to permanency in our city attorney position expeditiously. So that's maybe more explanation than I needed to do, but yes, Commissioner Asasi.
We made a motion to suspend the rules, but then we needed to make a motion for the resolution, so.
All right.
Obviously, something we don't always do, so I'll make a motion to support this resolution, as previously stated.
Thanks. All right. Having explained it all, any other questions or comments? All right, then I'd ask for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries. Thank you. This brings us to our next portion, which is public hearing, and to remind the audience, this is your first opportunity for public comment, but specifically about the items on which we're having public hearing. At the end of our hearing, we'll have general public comment. But the first item, Ms. Renaro is coming up to introduce for us, but City Clerk, I suppose you can explain why she's coming up. Yeah, this is a public hearing to consider establishing an industrial development district, sorry, wrong one, public hearing to consider the establishment of a neighborhood enterprise zone for the 125 Ottawa Redevelopment Project located at 125 Ottawa Avenue Northwest. Thanks, Ms. Renaro.
Thank you. Good evening. Yes, Sam Cummings, Jared Belka here to represent 125 Ottawa. This project you've seen before because of the Brownfield Plan Amendment making its way through. Typically, we bundle these. We didn't for no good reason this time, and so we're doing this presentation as a memory jog here. So this is activation of the second through floor, second floors through fourth floor, or fourth floor, excuse me, into 36 residential apartments with total eligible investment at $11.4 million. This item on the agenda tonight is specific to the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone, which because of the project meeting two city investment criteria qualifies for the most, the longest term of 15 years. There's the two main reasons, is because one, it has awesome exclusion plan goals that describes aspirational goals for our micro-local women-owned and minority-owned business subcontractors at 30%, as well as the income restriction of 20% of the 36 units, which is eight units, for households earning at or below 60% area median income. With that, I'm going to let Sam come on up and help answer any questions that you might have.
Hi, Sarah.
Thank you.
Good evening. How's everybody doing? Great. So this is, I think, review. I'm here to answer questions unless you'd like me to articulate, again, what this project is, but I appreciate your support. We're excited to reinvest in this building once again and bring more residents into downtown and a good mix of affordable and even more affordable residential units right into the center of our city. So I'm happy to field any questions, and...
No questions, Mr. Cummings. I do, I do want to sing the praise of this project in one way that hadn't occurred to me when you came up the first time. That is to say, cars cost about $10,000 a year each, and so not all housing that you might call affordable is equal. Housing that allows for the highest possibility of non-car transportation to work affords a whole layer of affordability that isn't available, that isn't available for housing for which, almost inevitably, you'd have to have a car to get to work. So I want to point out that this project is in our highest concentration of jobs, and so it's very likely statistically that a lot of the people who live here will be able to be people who work downtown and who can get to work using their feet, which will save them, even if they only are a one-car family instead of a two-car family. That's $1,000 a month, give or take, that they'll be able to spend on other things, including housing. So the very fact that you're doing this in the most walkable part of the city, in the densest concentration of jobs in the city, makes this project particularly important in terms of, it gives it an extra boost for affordability that our traditional metrics don't do a very good job of capturing. And I think we ought to start capturing walkability as part of the metric we use when we examine global affordability, because affordability isn't just housing, it's housing plus transportation. And transportation costs for folks in this project will very, very likely be much lower than it would be in other projects, so.
I appreciate that. I mean, that's actually one of the, you know, we're focused on target markets, and that is one of our target markets for this, is being affordable for the folks that keep things running downtown. And it is kind of a perfect project for that, because when you see, there's only 36 units, so you see a project of a lot, that has a lot of scale. You can get a lot of efficiency with scale, and when you do smaller projects like this, the cost per unit is a lot larger. So it's a, it's a great, great historic building. It's going to be wonderful to see this. We're not there yet, we still have some feasibility and some hurdles to get over, but it's going to be wonderful to see it contributing 24 hours and reducing the space, reducing Class B office space, improving overall demographics in our city and just making it a better place. So, thank you.
And your timing was off by about 20 years, but if you'd done this 20 years ago, you would have got me 36 at least reliable customers for my coffee house, which is about 50 feet away from this. Any other discussion, colleagues?
Thank you.
Commissioner Belcheck, you had a...
I just wanted to reiterate that I think that, in particular, the willingness to be able to look at and find ways to bring 60% AMI and 80% AMI housing downtown is very commendable, and being able to repurpose this asset I've had for a long time, I think, and bring vibrancy to downtown. My word for 2025 has been conviviality, and the, when you have people living here doing that sort of, just walking around and, you know, being arboristas and all the other things, I think it really matters for that vibrant, convivial society we want. So I just want to say thank you for putting the investment back into the city again.
Appreciate that. Yeah, we're, we're excited about that too, because I agree 100%, and, you know, I, we have a long history of recycling and how we do things. We don't often pat ourselves on the back or wave flags, but the best form of green development is recycling what you have, and when one use becomes kind of more challenged, if you can pivot to a different use. And I think that the staying power of this use is much longer than the Class B office space, which requires a lot of continuous reinvestment, and we're particularly excited about the population that it will serve as well, so.
Thank you. So any member of the public wishing to comment on this agenda item? Seeing none, then I will close this hearing and refer this to committee at the hall. Brings us to Ms. Renaro again, and City Clerk, if you could introduce the next public hearing.
Mayor, before he does it, can we take the next two items together for the public?
Yeah, yes, for the interest of efficiency, those of you who have agendas will notice that items number two and three are both regarding 1920 Northridge Drive Northwest. So let's consolidate item two and number three, and items three there. So, Ms. Renaro. Or City Clerk. So these two public hearings are the public hearing to consider establishing an industrial development district for Falk material wool at a 19, at 1920 Northridge Drive Northwest in the Walker View Industrial Park, and then following that will be a public hearing to consider an application for industrial facilities exemption certificate for Falk material wool for an $8.9 million project located at 1920 Northridge Drive Northwest in the Walker View Industrial Park. Thank you. Ms. Renaro.
Thank you, yes. So in an instance like this, we can take both the district and the exemption at the same meeting. For NEZ, we have to separate them, so that's just what we're guided by. So this project is pretty exciting, and in the Walker View Industrial Park, this is Falk, Falk North America, who is the parent company of Falk Panel, which was founded in 2020 and opened a production facility in the industrial park. The company supplies insulated metal panels for walls, roofs, and facade applications, primarily for commercial and industrial applications. Why it's so exciting is the, there's an expansion here for a new construction, production facility of 82,500 square feet with an estimated cost of $8.9 million in investment. This production facility will host 14 new employees at ranges between, hourly ranges between $21 an hour up to $55 an hour. We have a couple of representatives from the company here. I wanted to invite Beau, who's the president, up to just say a couple of comments on why this project's important.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much for having us and having the opportunity and for the continued support. I'm from the Netherlands, and I am, yes, I'm pretty tall, you can tell. But I came here six years ago, and this is my second time to be in front of you guys. Maybe some of you remember that, but then it was all at a, you know, a new start, and we didn't know how it goes and how it went, and it went really well, and I would like to say thank you to everybody and thank you for your support, because we love it here. We love Grand Rapids, we love Walker, because it's a little bit on the, on the border there, right? But like the project is showing, you know, it looks like 14, but that's only for Phase One, when this facility is totally up and established, we're looking at approximately 50 employees in that facility. So we see, what we're going to make there is a little bit of a different panel that we make right now. I heard about fire, and I heard about the fire department. This is going to be a fire-rated panel, so that helps us to slow down the fires that are going to happen in buildings, and it gives our firefighters a little bit more time to get there, you know? So it's an important product for us right now. We sell everywhere in the United States, but we see more and more building code changes where we see that the need of an insulated metal panel with a fire rating, a higher fire rating, is more and more important, so that's driven by the building code, and we want to participate in there. So that is the reason for this expansion. So that is the reason for this expansion. Machinery is being ordered, so it's coming, but yeah, we would like to thank you all for your support, and who would have thought of that five, six years ago, when I stood in front of you guys, and here we are, five, six years further, and this facility is going to be even bigger than the one that we have right now, and potentially with more people and more employees. So I would like to pause here to answer any questions if there are.
It's really exciting. This is great. I think you're just going to get a lot of happy faces up here, so I don't know if anyone has any questions? Great. Well, thank you so much. Great to hear the investment, good to hear about the wage scale, obviously, construction in general, you know, this is something where we know there's a need for construction, so to have people doing the manufacturing side of it and have it here in the city is really gratifying. It's exciting.
Yeah, and to comment on that real short, is what we're trying to do with our wages, we're trying to come up with an average, what is the average in the industry, and we're always trying to beat at that higher rate level, because, you know, who are we without our workers, you know? They're doing fantastic job, and we've been blessed so far with the culture and with the workforce that we have going right now, and that's why we wanted to continue in the same spot, to keep that culture going, you know? Another point that I would like to mention is, we like the support of the PA 198, our general contractor is fully on board. We have already the first architect selected who is a minority company, and it works great. So wherever we can, we push that agenda also, so thank you very much for your support.
Thank you so much. Seeing no comments from my colleagues, and if anyone from the public wants to weigh in here, seeing no one, I will close those two public hearings and refer them to committee of the whole. That brings us to our next public hearing, and City Clerk, if you can introduce it, and Ms. Bohatch has just taken the microphone.
So this is public hearing on the draft fiscal, the FFY 2026 through 2030 Consolidated Housing and Community Development HCD plan.
Thank you, Ms. Bohatch.
Good evening. So this, today's public hearing is to provide an opportunity for input on our consolidated housing and community development plan. That is a document that serves as a five-year strategic plan for our federal resources that are formula-funded, which is the Community Development Block Grant, the Home Investment Partnerships, and the Emergency Solutions Grants. That five-year plan would be in effect from July 1, 2026 through June 30 of 2031. The plan itself aligns with our city's strategic plans and a variety of other plans, as well as other community plans, and really establishes our framework for our neighborhood investment plan that we use to guide annual allocations for these resources over that five-year period. So the Neighborhood Investment Plan does include, that funding process includes the Community Development Block Grant, Home Investment Partnership, and Emergency Solutions Grants, which is required from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development in this five-year plan, but we also during that funding process include other resources that support outcomes within that plan, and we include it at the same time when we make those annual allocations, and so of course, we've included some of that within this context of this plan. In the development of the document, this which is a draft, we looked at a lot of different data sets through the Census Bureau, through special tabulations of census data that's provided to HUD, as well as other community, other local and regional data sets. Here is, it's kind of hard to see, but these are also plans that we reviewed in terms of the data and the outcomes and different strategies to make sure that what we were looking at in terms of how we might be able to use our limited resources, that we were aligning with other community plans and as well as our own to cities. So there's 18 different documents that we looked at, and you can see, we tried to put together sort of a matrix of where our goals align with those goals as well. And again, these are limited resources, so we're trying to look at where there's needs and how we can fill gaps. In addition to the data and the community plans that we looked at, we also held focus groups, we had consultation sessions, we conducted a survey that was distributed via email, social media, and among our partner agencies, and then we also had an input, community input through a public comment period and public hearing back in September, looking at what community needs, future needs and priorities might be. Overall, so we took all that information and tried to summarize it, because the, you know, currently the document, without it being, looking pretty in any way, is 160 pages, and so we tried to summarize, again, trying to move forward in how we will invest these funds on an annual basis through that Neighborhood Investment Plan strategy, and these are the areas where it was very clear that we have needs and perhaps gaps, whether that was in services or funding, and no surprise, affordable housing and homelessness were high priorities, as well as the lack of accessibility for homeownership and housing instability and services to support that or mediate that, as well as existing housing conditions, behavioral health, mental health, and substance use disorders, a focus on increase in wages and access to job opportunities, and also around community organizing and neighborhood cohesion and safety. So when we summarize all that information, and again, trying to get us to a point that on an annual basis that we can allocate those resources, we summarize those into our Neighborhood Investment Plan around eight outcome areas. Some of them are similar to what was in our previous five-year plan. Again, things like preventing and resolving homelessness, creating and preserving affordable housing, because those are top priorities, but we also tried to create some focus on the addition of, really focusing more on home ownership opportunities, and more specifically calling out an outcome specifically for behavioral health. Previously, programs that we may have funded in the area fell under that outcome for safety. We wanted to make it more prevalent in our outcomes and how we solicit for applications. And then we also wanted to emphasize the work that we do around economic opportunity, a focus on increasing wages, not just job training, not just skills attainment, but also demonstrating that there's, getting a job that might result in an increased wage and more economic opportunity. We did remove from our previous or our current Neighborhood Investment Plan the outcome of neighborhood infrastructure, because there have been other resources that are available within our organization and within the community to address those, and allows us to focus our limited resources on these other priority areas. And then one minor change, but around the foster-engaged and connected communities, which is typically where you would see neighborhood organizing and crime prevention, sorry, neighborhood organizing activities, we added the concept of resiliency. Not necessarily, we don't have anything particularly in mind, but to see programming that might help with education and preparedness within neighborhoods and the community. In this process, we have target areas and how we focus some of our resources. Many of our programs are available citywide, and the programs that we fund are available citywide, but there's two ways that are, to have eligibility for those programs. One is a direct benefit, so that's where an individual is receiving a service directly, and these programs serve primarily low and moderate income persons or households, and so if you're receiving a direct benefit, you have to actually verify income. So they have to go through a process where they provide a documentation and that we verify that they're eligible. There's other programs, typically, community organizing, crime prevention, and things that become more of an area or general neighborhood or resident benefit. Those are things that you really can't provide a service and say, give me your income verification, so that's an area-wide benefit, and it requires LMI data to support that in terms of that geography. So we use those target areas to identify neighborhoods or area geography where at least 55% of the residents are low mod income, so that helps ensure that those who are eligible to receive that service are income-eligible, as well as target limited resources. As a result of that, with changing demographics and changing, so this is all based on census data, there are changes to our target area map. So that required the removal of the East Town specific target area, but it also then created the opportunity for the addition of the Boston Square target area. So East Town specific area, target area, for example, no longer meets that threshold because they are below 51% of the, of low-mod income residents. And then there was just some slight changes to other areas, just based on trying to clean up some Census Bureau block group boundaries. So the next steps for this is, we have had this out for public comment, and we will continue to take public comments. So tonight is a public hearing, so that we can, if anyone wants to vocalize any comments, but we've been receiving written communications. We expect to come back to the City Commission on December 16th to have you adopt a final plan, and so we will be hopefully, you know, getting it into its final form by then, and then this would also allow us to move forward in January with our first year of funding for this five-year strategy. And then in March, those funding recommendations would come forward to the City Commission, and then in May, you would make final decisions on those projects and programs that we would bring forward for our annual action plan to go to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. So this is a process that allows us, again, to allocate those resources on an annual basis and provides the strategy around it. We do anticipate, because of the uncertainty of our federal resources, to return to a process that we have used in the past until COVID, which is that we have a, which would be a very robust request for proposals process in years one and four of that five-year plan, and then in years two and three, and then the final year five, where it is a more limited RFP for those who have been funded and will have requests for continued funding, so that it is open for year one. Year two and three then becomes a continued funding process, so they have the reliability of the potential of receiving those funds, and then year four opens back up again. And so that's just to let you know that's what's planned moving forward. So if there's any questions, or we can just take comments.
Thanks. Any questions or discussions, colleagues? Commissioner Belichick?
So if I heard this correctly, this is mostly on behalf of anyone who might be interested in applying. These are funds that we are getting, this is our strategy that we're reviewing and getting public input on, and in January, you guys, as a community development team, open up the RFP requests, right? And year one is your chance to get in. Otherwise, with this new plan, I heard you say you're going to be looking in years two and three more at refund, like returning to funding, continuing funding for those who are making progress on their, and that makes sense, I think, in particular with the kinds of metrics and goals you're looking at, with increased wages, with homeownership, with different gaps that you're trying to fill. I think they're not something that you can do in one year, so I think that strategy does make sense, and I just want to make that very clear, that this, if we got community people interested in applying, they should apply this year, not wait. Oops, sorry.
And I should say, there's one caveat to that, is that for development projects, affordable housing, development projects, those type of things, would actually be open on an annual basis, because they're project-related and very unique, but when it's programs and services, it would run that way. And just to be clear, these are not resources that we have, these are resources that we anticipate, and this process that will start in January, we do not have a budget from the federal government. So again, but we will still go through the process, we will anticipate that we will get resources, and we'll still keep moving forward until we find out what that final number is.
Thank you for that very important clarification. Appreciate it.
Okay. Seeing no further discussion from my colleagues, any public comment on this item?
How y'all doing? I'm Dee Jones, passionate entrepreneur and visionary. I'd just like to thank Connie Bohatch for letting me know that the city government has been listening to me, and that you guys are going to allow people to actually put in the RFP and to actually develop 3D printing houses. 3D printing houses could be something that these funds can be used, so I've been advocating for a very long time, since 2018, for 3D printing houses and innovation, and thankful for Ryan Kilpatrick. I'm sure that he's still been progressing on actually getting some funding to actually get a 3D printer to 3D print houses, and it's very cold, I know it's a lot of unhoused people around here, and some people don't even got heat in their car, but I can't imagine not even having a house and things like that, and I know it's still people sleeping under the bridge. I know the bridge by the soccer stadium is still gated, and that people just don't have the resources and the comfort of a home, and so I know how important that is, because I like to go home, I like to chill in my room, I like to play the video game, I like to rub my feet together and do cool things in my room and just, you know, chill, but everybody doesn't have that luxury. So just thankful that the city government and the community, I don't know exactly from the city government who's been listening to me, but thankful for the community development, at least Connie Bohatch, that she's letting me know that she's been listening to me, and that 3D printing is something that the city government can actually give funds to actually develop, so I know that there's eventually in the future, as an innovative leader, that there is going to be some 3D printed houses, and hopefully I see the city government, and you guys are going to be teasing, looking at me like, hey Dee Jones, you were speaking about this one day, now it's a reality, because there are other visions that I've made a reality too, that I'll speak to you about. Thank you.
My name is Amy Brock. I vote in the 49548 zip code, and I wanted to speak on the plan for the Consolidated Housing and Community Development Plan. I've been working with Degagey a little bit, and the shelter system used to serve 44 or so plus folks, and now they serve 144 at the last count that I gave. And I donated something the other week and was dropping it off, and the women were sitting out there so freezing cold, and I just kind of cringed, I got teary-eyed a little as I tried to walk around them, not pay attention, but I did, I couldn't help but pay attention. And I thought to myself, how are they doing the programming there with all the things they're trying to accomplish with 144 folks, and they were doing it with 44? And the thing is, they told me they have four case managers, that's 60-some women per case manager. So if some of this money could be used to get another case manager for Degagey, that would be a wonderful thing. Some of these shelters are overburdened with trying to accomplish housing folks that are homeless, and so how do we accomplish when homeless folks are rising in the numbers with what we're trying to do to get them housed when case managers have caseloads of 60-plus? How do we do that? How do they do that? I don't know. And so I think it's just not happening to the numbers that we want. I'm going to keep working with them, I'm going to keep, I'm with Grand Rapids for affordable housing, and so I'm going to keep trying to give suggestions, I want to keep working with them, not against them, because we need to keep shelters open, but I don't know how they're going to do it without more money, and we need more money for more people. And so I hope this plan can give more money to shelters like Degagey, and their government piece of the pie is a little bit from the city, a little bit from the county, a lot from Chamber of Commerce, but a lot from in-kind donations, and people just aren't being as in-kind, okay? And so we need more money from you guys in this budget, so please, think of people like Degagey, Mel Trotter, they're sitting in the cold right now, and I was chilly outside, just waiting before I came in here, okay? And so let's just think of our folks and try to get them rehoused, supportive housing, the right proper treatment, and they're not going to get rounded up like in the state of U-Haul where they're building a facility for 600-type people that are going to be involuntarily placed. That's just wrong, and we're not going to do that in Grand Rapids. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Martha Cooper. I'm a longtime resident of Grand Rapids, Michigan. It's been a while since I've seen you all. I was with Amy when we did the tour down at Degagey, and I've been, I read an article, I've talked to you before about homelessness among... I've, I've talked to you before about homelessness among the elderly in the city. This is happening, like a third of the women at Degage are over sixty. I had heart failure. I had a lot of meds to take and it was down to thirty percent of heart function for a while. I'm so much better now, but I was housed. I could take care of my health. These women don't have anywhere to go. They don't even have a bathroom they can use regularly. So I've been for a long time. I don't want to be an angry or resentful person, but yes, I have big feelings about this. I see an article today about all of the investment that's going on down by the river. The Three Towers, the amphitheater, the stadium, the trails, how much we're going to have tourism, how many jobs. And when she was up here talking, I, hopefully I'm doing this in the right order, but during, in that, in that article, another thing that really stood out to me, because I've been talking about homelessness among the elderly, is that in that it said, article, it said Grand Rapids is an aging city. We have more old people than we do children. I was blown away. I was really blown away by that. And the thing is, is that old people aren't your tourists, are they? Old people don't work and pay taxes anymore, do they? So they're not our priority. I do have resentment because a lot of you were supposedly Democrats until you sit down here and then you're owned by the Chamber of Commerce. There's plenty of money. There's state money coming out the ass, excuse me, to, to the DeVos's for their Three Towers. And off of that kind of money, some seventy-seven million dollars is going to come five, seven million over a period of twenty years, which will amount to about three hundred and fifty dollars, give or take ten thousand for the affordable housing. And that's not going to be enough to cover much of anybody. So I'm looking and saying, there is plenty of, of money. It's just there's no will. And political will is what we need to get some of these things done. It's not just how much money can we get from the federal government or the state government? We have money here. This is problems we could solve. And instead, what I see is the city trying to get all the money.
Ms. Cooper, you passed for three minutes.
Yeah, I was going to beef about the dash buses and how you're going to make those costs when I can't afford parking downtown.
Hi, how are you doing today? That's good. Well, the reason I'm up here today is because I want to first, I want to talk about two populations that are kind of connected. The first one is the homeless. I feel like, because I've been through this myself, first of all, the homeless, many of them, like the youth, even some of the older people don't have the life skills they need in order to, even if they do secure an apartment, they don't have the life skills they need to keep that apartment, like maybe meal planning, budgeting, just the, the proper things they need in order to, even getting off, maybe the reason why they can't get off, get out of the homeless because they don't know what to do. Like they don't, they don't know, like just basic things. Everybody else, maybe their parents didn't teach them. And maybe if they get some of those life skills to them, like maybe in the show too, like get them like, like maybe a social worker can teach them them things they're interested in learning. And for the mentally ill, because I've noticed, because I've dealt with both of these, they're, they're not helping the mentally ill and the, and the things they do have for the mentally ill was not that good because first of all, I'm, I was on, I was on a medication for mental illness and it kept me from getting a job for like seven years. I couldn't even get a job. And they'll say things like, oh, the, it's either the health or the side effects, like which one are you going to pick? And that's not fair. I believe that there's other things that can deal with that problem. There's alternatives to medication and I'm working with the holistic doctor myself in order to get off of these medications now so I can get me a job. All this time I couldn't get a job and that's not fair because I have to, if I can't support myself, if something happens like any other things that are supporting me right now, I'm going to be homeless again. So there needs to be something done in the mental health system. And, and people with mental health issues, maybe they have trouble with like, a lot of them have trouble like relating to people. That's the reason why some of them got sick because they don't know how to, they have trauma, of course, and they don't know how to have the whole relationship. So it makes something in their mind mess up and they don't know, like, and then like no one's helping them to, no one's helping them to get the help they need. They'll see a home, like people are made fun of for these conditions. They'll make fun of them or they'll, they'll try to say, oh, get off the, these people need to get off the street, they can get a job or, I'm talking about the homeless, but they don't know what they've been through. So I'm just, like the mentally ill need help and the homeless need help in these areas and that's all I wanted to say.
Could you give us your name and where you live?
You said what?
Could you give us your name and where you live?
Connie Sugar Green. I'm from, I live by, I live on Northwest Side, Alpine.
Just in the city? Great. Okay. Thank you so much. Should have asked for that at the front end. My fault.
Good evening. Nancy Haynes. I live in the first ward. I'm the executive director of the Fair Housing Center of West Michigan. It's great to see a lot of you again that I've met. And I'm here tonight because I just want to start by recognizing what a great document we have in this consolidated plan. I'm on the National Fair Housing Alliance Board of Directors. So I see consolidated plans from all over the country and all over the state. We serve thirty-eight counties. I've never seen a consolidated plan this well thought out, this well put together, that looked at this many reports and data and the compilation of the surveys, the focus groups. It's just really incredible. And this will be a document that the city can use to guide its investments, not just the federal investments, but hopefully other city investments as well, as well as the community partners. We, we can use this document as well. So I just want to commend the staff. It's really an incredible document. I also want to say that we agree with the objectives and outcomes identified in the plan. We're excited that many of the outcomes align with our eighteen-month strategic action plan that we just adopted in October, my board of directors adopted. It's not a five-year strategic plan because there's so much chaos and uncertainty at the federal level. We need an action plan for a year and then hopefully things will calm down and we can look forward. But it's, when I looked at your consolidated plan last week and compared that with our action plan, they really align well. And not just with our action plan, but we also do community investment when we get large settlements from cases. So we had one point two million dollars from a Wells Fargo settlement that we invested with community partners in four nine five oh seven. We had six hundred and four thousand that we invested in four nine five oh seven with community partners from the Fannie Mae. We also get contributions from partners who want to help address the historic disinvestment and discrimination in neighborhoods. So your plan will help us guide our investments and hopefully fill gaps. The outcomes that most closely align are one, two, of course, three, that specifically mentions fair housing, four, seven, and eight. And we really look forward to working with the city to prevent and address issues of illegal housing discrimination, as well as to ensure every neighborhood in Grand Rapids is a neighborhood of opportunity and choice where all the residents can thrive. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Matthew. I'm here with my dad. You have, I've been here before and you have given us permission, not to say address, but we have been, we live, we live in, we live in Grand Rapids and I, what, I was not going to speak, but, but the ladies stood my, stood me. So thank you for, thank you for all of your service and yeah, you can, you can ask for money, but what the, what this, the people really need is information on how to, how to develop a relationship with the Lord and dad has been, I've only lived thirty years, but dad has been living, I mean, working in, as a pastor for over fifty years and he has seen, yeah, he has seen the effects and so seek the Lord and they are better. And like I said at the last commission meeting, thank you, thank the Lord that we are, that the, thanks to the, thanks to the, thanks to the lawsuits against plant genocide, the people, I mean, the one, the only one involved in Wisconsin is shutting down and the largest in the state of Texas is shutting down and we pray that it will spread here.
Seeing no further public comment, I will close that public hearing. And that brings us to opportunity for public comment on any matter. And feel free to come up to the microphone, Mr. Jones. It's been minutes.
How y'all doing? I'm Dee Jones. First I got to say, I like Phil to be our city attorney. He's been here for a long time. I think he'd be a good city attorney in the future. Also, I just got a certification from the University of South Florida Professional Life Learner, because I like to have a life's work, not working on my life. One day I'll die. I know I'll die for sure, but I like for people to look at my life and see that I worked all my life to change society and to change humanity and to give back and I didn't do things that I weren't passionate about. So a life's work instead of working on my life. But here's my nice certification from this Division One University for AI and Work and Life. Then as you guys know, I hosted the largest regional finals in the United States of America at the DeVos place. So it's cool to have this nice booklet, actually being here in Ballroom C. And then I have my nice badge here, being one of the organizers, bringing the largest esports regional finals in the United States. We actually had like fifteen colleges and seventeen high schools, even Detroit Catholic was there. It was crazy to have Detroit schools here at the DeVos place. It's crazy. It was just crazy because they were actually viral on ESPN for esports. And so to be the pioneer, to bridge the gaps, to see Eric Brown, the CEO of the Urban League, and have him connected to the same organization that hosted the regional finals and Mark Hodges to actually get the black community to truly build digital equity. Heard you speaking about people getting the grand David at the other project, but I actually get a grand to stream on a decentralized platform every thirty days, just to just speak. I could have streamed this and been getting my points and then got crypto and still got paid that thousand. And so it's just cool because I'm a visionary and pioneer. Also, the armed services was there. I did about forty-five pull-ups. So I'm going to slap this because I think I had a pretty strong thing I was trying to do for this, with the Safe Pitch Task Force, but it's all right. I'm going to continuously do the huge things that I'm doing because it's going to get even bigger. We're going to be announcing this in the spring. Mark was already talking about giving us two ballrooms and we have an organization that does some pretty cool stuff that can bring two thousand people additionally to what we already done, having colleges and high schools across, having schools in Ohio, like our, our, our vice president is from Ohio. I think if we just keep doing the good things ethically and equitably, that we'll get some bad people out of office because I'm a national global leader. I just had an article published today about me being on the United Nations and being on the decentralized streaming platform and I'm one of the featured creators. I'm a genius. I'm a billionaire. I'm a left-handed genius from Chicago that's putting on for the city of GR. That was on all of the TV stations, in person in TV. So I'm just speaking positivity into existence because I had a vision for this. I brought the largest regional finals in the United States to the DeVos place. It's going to be cool to have those conversations with the DeVos's and the billionaires because I ethically brought economic change. And I can't wait to give you guys the economic impact of what all of that has done for the city and the region because the genius Dee Jones did this all along.
Hello, I am Laura Sassa from second ward. So thank you first of all to the City Commission for hosting today's meeting in the second ward. We really appreciate the opportunity to meet with all of you. I'm here today with a few of my neighbors from the Northeast Citizens Action Neighborhood Association or NICA. And if you're curious, that's where you are right now. We are the second largest neighborhood in the city by land area and a non-funded neighborhood association. So essentially we're a group of volunteers. We've met with several developers, city planning, economic development, The Right Place, and many others over the past fifteen-plus years through the leadership of Betsy, hoping to attract attention to the much needed improvement that we're looking to see on the Leonard Street Corridor from Fuller to the East Belt Line. We also participated in four community engagement sessions with residents and businesses to share our vision for the updated new twenty-year master plan. And we're here tonight to ask for your help. So NICA is a great place to live. It includes more than twenty thousand residents with boundaries from Michigan Street to Nap and Fuller to the East Belt Line, which also includes Nap's Corner, Celebration Village, and Nap's Crossing. And according to city traffic data, nearly thirty thousand vehicles travel the stretch of Leonard Street every day. And I wouldn't be here if I also didn't note that that also includes many pedestrians and cyclists walking by. I live on Leonard. I see it all the time. So not just cars. We have excellent access to highways though. I ninety-six, one ninety-six, M thirty-seven from Fuller, Leonard, and the East Belt Line. And we also have excellent public transportation on Leonard, Fuller, Ball, and Plymouth. So basically you can get anywhere in the city in about ten minutes. And I can attest to that, even on the bus, which we are served by three rapid bus lines. We're home to more nonprofits than any other part of the city, including the Ronald McDonald House, the fourteen-acre kids' food bastic farm, Kent County Jail, Sheriff's Department, several comprehensive mental health counseling facilities, substance use treatment, and family service facilities. And we include Cornerstone University with over fifteen hundred students and three Christian-based elementary and high schools, but no public schools in the neighborhood. And my neighbor will continue.
Hello, good evening. My name is Jody Smith. I am a resident also of, we call it NICA, and I've lived here my whole life. I also sell real estate. I've been doing that for thirty years. So I just want to share that with you just because I have an eye for what's going on in West Michigan for thirty years. And thank you for what you guys are doing for the city. I've heard, it's, it's hard to hear these hard stories before me, before we're talking about, we have an ask. We have a call for you guys, just like the people before me. And we have this corridor on Leonard here that we need some attention. We're hoping that we can have that conversation and somehow be a highlight maybe for twenty twenty-six. We're asking the city to, to find out, how come we, we're asking, how are you guys engaging with investors? We know business people are calling you investors. I should have talked to Mr. Cummings. I, I do know of him. So say, hey, can you do another project over here? But we, we are missing some things along the Leonard area and that's what we're asking. But we're wondering if there's a way that we could have a area-specific plan organized in some fashion, whether it's with, just like you guys have done for the Creston neighborhood or the southeast neighborhoods. And again, those are just beautiful things that you've done. But if you look at Leonard, if you're driving down between Fuller and the Belt Line, it's not horrible. It just could be a lot better, especially when we're having people coming from Frederick Meyer Gardens down into the city. It's a great corridor to get downtown. I, I live right off from Leonard there and I've been there for fifteen years. I think it would, it's a little bit of an eyesore in some areas. We could really use some businesses that would support the people, the taxpayers and the people might not be paying taxes, but someday they will be. I think of the college students. There's a lot of them. Eighty thousand I hear in West Michigan each year. So let's, let's have some businesses that could complement to help people live better in the area. And that's the ask. We really appreciate everything you guys do and thank you for listening. Have a good night.
Good evening. Greetings in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. My name is Daniel Scut. My real identity is I'm a follower of the Lord Jesus Christ. A little bit different tenor tonight than what I usually share about speaking up for the unborn. November twenty-seventh will be our national holiday of Thanksgiving. And according to God's Word, the Holy Scriptures, every day should be Thanksgiving. And according to God's word, the holy scriptures, every day should be Thanksgiving. Especially to the almighty Lord God for giving us life and breath every day and for the Lord Jesus Christ dying on the cross for our sins. Because of his sacrifice, we can have eternal life by calling on him to save us. Again, I like to invite each one of you, if you ever have a prayer request, personal, family, or business, I'd be happy to uh pray for you. But I did want to thank each one of you. Mayor Legrand, City Manager, Washington, and each one of you. I realize it's not an easy job that you have. I've been to many of these, of course, and I've heard the complaints. I've seen the anger. But I want you to know that I pray for you every day, not by name, but by grouping. I also want to thank Police Chief Winstrom. I didn't see him here tonight, but the whole police department for their very special service. We live in uh evil days and it's becoming more and more dangerous for law enforcement. I did see police or Fire Chief Brown. Thank you, uh Chief Brown, and your other workers, firemen, firewomen, for risking your life every day for the safety of Grand Rapids. We just had Veterans Day. I want to thank any veterans that are in the audience tonight for their service and sacrifice, which would include for the city of Grand Rapids. And finally, I'd like to acknowledge Michael Ortiz. He works for you, works for the city. And uh I had a sewage backup or backup recently in my home on the west side. And uh he came out and see what he saw, what he could do as far as the city was concerned to uh unplug my stinky drain. He could not help us in the end, but I want you to know, his service was kind and knowledgeable. And it was a blessing to see my tax dollars at work. So thank you, everyone, once again.
Good evening. Lucas, First Ward, resident and passionate opponent of mediocrity and insidification. Thanks again for your night out meetings. In the spirit of tonight's theme, I want to draw your attention to a couple of things on my mind. I've frustrated many other activists by pointing out the poor strategy behind an array of their efforts, including the ham-handed boycott against Long Road. It isn't the right move for marketable traction, but that doesn't mean these folks don't have a very valid point and an extremely critical set of concerns that must be given priority and leadership action. So I'm reiterating my call for you to mobilize and empower the wonderful and talented people in the communications team and all their resources to do what I urged you to do several months ago, express the ways in which the city meets the concerns of the people. Specifically, I'm talking about the idea that Commissioner Belcheck mentioned that she feels the city already meets these demands of local activists concerning the Gestapo thugs from ICE and sanctuary city considerations. I immediately challenged all of you in writing that night to communicate as soon as possible, if that's the case. That was July. This is November. I've discussed it with Mayor Legrand, who also feels that you meet these concerns, and he's indicated these comms might be in the works, but again, it's been more than ninety days. I should, it shouldn't have to take that long for this city with the talent and the big paychecks involved to create and publicize explainers and comms about these topics and what's being done to rise to the call of the people. Unless, of course, you don't actually meet those needs and concerns, or you lack the guts to say so out loud. Ninety days. As I would tell any team I work on, get it done. Next, let's talk about the management of our streets. I'm once again asking you to take seriously a move swiftly on bike safety, reining in contractors, and handling parking and access plans. I want to say it now so I can tell you I told you so later. The initial seasons of amphitheater and soccer stadium events are gonna be a dysfunctional nightmare based on how things look today. Tonight, I did learn that there's a plan underway, so I urge you to be quick and transparent with that plan. Many of the best ideas in GR don't even require money or are incredibly inexpensive. You just need the will to do what needs to be done and the spine to demand that big-money businesses and overly controlling state agencies meet you in compromise on behalf of all of us. I look forward to seeing you all give this better attention with visible and demonstrated results. Thanks again for this evening.
Hello, my name is Karen. I'm from Second Ward and I'm not good at public speaking, but I'm gonna try. So thank you for this opportunity to to speak. Um I wanted to address the violent and unnecessary arrest of Ned Andre and Victor Williams, community leaders in Grand Rapids. The arrest occurred in the Boston Square neighborhood on Friday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-five. Ned and his associates established a safe vantage point to witness and video record providing citizen overwatch of GRPD. Uh Ned and the crowd exercised their First Amendment right to free speech, but did not did not obstruct GRPD from performing their official duties. By the end of the encounter, GRPD confirmed that the young man was legally open carrying under Michigan law. No crime of any kind had been committed. They were released to continue walking home. Despite this, GRPD officers brutally arrested Ned Andre and Victor Williams. The arrest was so violent, Ned required immediate medical attention um and was rushed to the hospital for life-saving treatment while in police custody. Afterward, GRPD charged him with two misdemeanors, failure to obey the lawful order of a police officer, and obstructing, resisting, assaulting, and battering police officers. Ned now faces a hundred and forty days in jail and a thousand-dollar fine with the city of Grand Rapids attorney prosecuting the charges. I'm asking you to critically examine the conduct of the GRPD officers involved in this incident, as with Eric Winstrom's defamatory press conference afterward. Chief Winstrom's press conference was designed to frame and control the narrative of the incident. Defamatory remarks may amount to criminal jury pool tampering. While Ned will will address the chief and his officers directly in court, we ask you to consider the broad community issues this incident exposes. The residents of Grand Rapids have witnessed a pattern of outcomes GRPD's current ethos training and tactics. I urge you to join a community conversation and action work group in twenty twenty-six to address systemic flaws. Please consider the following solutions. Um this is not a definitive list. Improve GRPD officer training to prevent abuse of power and excessive use of force. Include community relationship building and introductions to local leaders and officer training. Prohibit the chief of police from making public statements that prejudice the jury of a resident's jury. Transfer the Internal Affairs Unit from GRPD to an independent civilian-led body. Assign ownership and custody of body camera footage to an independent agency. Vest full power of police oversight in a civilian body independent of GRPD. Remove the thin blue line flag displayed at GRPD Headquarters Service Desk. Prohibit GRPD officers from joining the Fraternal Order of Police in Churning, assuring allegiance only to the Constitution and the residents of their city. Implement the United Nations International Independent Expert Mechanism to advance racial equality in law enforcement. Expand restorative justice practices, reorganize the police force so that two-thirds are co-response units and one-third are one-armed tactical. End unqualified immunity and replace it with qualified immunity. I also welcome any ideas that may transform GRPD from a force of law enforcement to peacekeeping services that protects and serves all members of the community. I ask that you help us vest full control policing with the people rooted in the ideals of the Constitution and other democratic principles um so that when such issues arise, we, the people, can um
Yeah, you're about thirty seconds past your
Okay, all right. Thank you. I just hope you consider this.
Yep, yep, thank you.
Hello, friends. Mark from Grand Rapids. The Saturday afternoon game between South Carolina and Texas A&amp;M. Wide receiver Nick Harper took a took a pass and ran eighty yards for a touchdown. After he scored, I guess he felt something on his hamstring and he pulled up. And in order to keep it from getting keep getting worse, he ran into the the tunnel to to slow it down. His teammates was gonna check on him on CNBC All Right. This this is when a state trooper from the Department of Public Safety in Texas, who was assigned to have security at the game, went up to the players and shoved them all the way, shoved them all the, shoved them around. And Harper looked at him and said, what you doing? And the cop made a basically a white supremacist gesture basically saying that subliminally, don't talk back to me, boy. Go to your bench. Fortunately, A&amp;M relieved him of his game-day duties. Now, if he could do that in a one-hundred-and-five-thousand-seat stadium with national TV cameras looking at him, there's no telling what he what he would do on the road to pull over individuals on the road. It could be, it could, it would have been, it could have been worse. This is why the Orange Felon issued one-hundred percent full immunity to all law enforcement nationwide, do whatever they damn well please. This was part of this. That is a problem. It could happen anywhere in this country. That's probably just why we have to get mobilized, get registered, and go out and vote. We'd like law enforcement to do their, to do it, but we gotta do it the right way. So stuff like this will not happen anywhere, including Grand Rapids. Thank you, Boycott Tesla.
Seeing no further public comment, um comments from my colleagues. Commissioner Knight?
I'm in shock right now. Uh just want to say, uh first of all, thank you uh to everybody who came out to engage um tonight, especially to the the team who has to move all of this. Like, this is a lot. It is a lot of work and um it does not go unseen. So thank you uh for spending your time to make this happen so we can get out in the community to do more. Um excited about some of the transformational projects that are happening in our community, especially some of the things that are happening with our community development department. Um uh I know it's difficult to try to plan and not know what to plan for because we don't know what's gonna happen. Uh I forgot to have my day count for y'all today, so I apologize for that. Um but it's been long um and it's tiring. And I know that um a lot of times we look at the things that happen in our community and we all think this one entity needs to solve the world's problems, or at least all of the community's problems. And coming into this work, I think I may have at one point thought the same thing. Um and then I learned, and my eyes were open to see how policy works and how change works and how the city as an organization works to try to do the best to support our community with what we have to do that with. Um we are a growing community. We are the second largest in this state. And with that comes lots of growing pains. And a lot of times we feel like this one person, I mean, it's like, you know, our kids, when they're younger, they feel like our parents should be able to conquer the world, that they are the superheroes, that they're the ones that make the change, that they're the ones that create the processes and that they are responsible to do it. And at the end of the day, we find out that our parents sometimes just couldn't do it all. But they did the very best that they could with what they had. And so I'm I'm grateful that we try to look at ways to support the needs of our community because we can't do it all. We're just, the the city just isn't skilled to do it all, y'all. And and I hate, you know, I I would love to say y'all need to, but they can't. I I've come to that realization, but I've also noticed that they try the best to do what we can with what we have. And I know there are many, many things that we want to see happen. We just had our a retreat and we talked about all the different categories that we wanted to see things implemented and happening in our community. And just to step back and realize that we can't do it all, but what can we do? We have community partners and organizations in this city that are very skilled at the work that they're doing. We have the Cure Violence Team that was here tonight. We have uh Fair Housing that is here in the room tonight. All of these people have a, Pastor Gaddy is in the room tonight, have a piece of the pie. And we're all working together to try to figure out how we can cross-pollinate and help make our city better for all of the citizens that live in it. And that's me included. I may be sitting up here right now, but I still live a couple blocks away. And I look for the things. I still deal with some of the same issues. My colleague dealt with a a serious issue last week as we were going to a meeting to meet with our community members and find out what was going on with them. This is just the 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 pull and tug. I want to see more revitalization in our community up in the, I just don't want to see Cousins Fried Chicken. I want to see some other coffee shops and and music and restaurants and vitality in our community. And we can get there. We can get there. I think it's really important for our community to understand. Sometimes we think when we hear a thing is happening over here that, well, if that's happening there, we get a piece of that too. And that's not always how it how it works because we can't do it. I don't think it's a thing of not wanting to help or support our community. There's some things that we just can't do because of different legal reasons or different parameters on certain types of money and where that money goes. But I do realize that we're trying to do the best that we can with what we have. And so I I appreciate your support. I appreciate your pushback. I appreciate your time. I appreciate it all. I'd love to sit down with anybody and you bring a, bring an item forward and talk about that. So one, we can help you understand what's actually possible with what we have. And then maybe come up with solutions on how we can work together to see if we can get something else to support that work. So thank you for your time. Thank you for keeping me up. Three hundred and two. I got you next time.
Commissioner Belcheck?
Thank you. Uh that was inspirational. I'm not sure I can follow that one. Um I also wanted to say thank you to everyone who bravely spoke at the mic, helped set up something, enjoyed dinner, enjoyed our engagement session. I think that when we're talking about public safety as we had for our theme tonight and I just want to remind us all that strong, safe neighborhoods begin with us. Um that means looking out for your neighbor. That means being willing to learn the systems, as Commissioner Knight was talking about. It means um who can we help? I think that this last month with everything going on from the SNAP um to other things in our community, we need, I think we need to remember that we are coming together as a community in different ways. And I do want to applaud the leadership here in the city and all of the community members and the network of organizations that leapt into action in order to address the emergent crisis around the food stability. Now, I did get an email today from someone asking what's our policy and how we're gonna be working to improve food stability in the future. And I I think this is an excellent point because as I was writing that email in response, it was a lot of what Commissioner Knight just said. The city cannot shoulder the burden of the federal government and the state and all the others. We cannot be all the things to all people. But that said, there is amazing things happening here in the community. And I want us to come together. That's my vision, to come together as neighbors to neighbors for strong, safe community, building the city of the future. And we heard examples tonight of industrial folks who are expanding and bringing technology and jobs. We heard about housing, and I think we have more exciting things in that regard. And we have to realize that this is what's happening in our evolution. Tonight's evolution, especially, I was shocked and happily so to see five hands get raised in the back of the gym with our new community police officers. So that is a win. That is something that has been talked about for years in the city, has been something that my Has been something that my community wants, all the community wants, and we have them. Five new. Newly ordained, so to speak, community officers specifically on patrol in our neighborhoods and I had a great time talking with them. So thank you. To those folks who've stepped, been appointed to that or stepped up. Um. I think that in our conversations around our priorities this last week or so, I just want to show you guys. If you ever, this is what we get to work with. These are, yeah, these, all these color coded categories are the, are the sections that we're working on as a city, as a holistic whole. And each of the bullet points in here are these priorities that Commissioner Knight was mentioning, we've been talking about and how to promote those for the next year. Those are the things that the city manager is going to be taking forward into the budget development for, that we'll be looking at in the spring. So thank you to folks who came out and asked for requests for assistance now and continue to do that by talking to our staff. Um, I think we're, we're prioritizing people, but we can always do a better job. So to that end, I will simply say, come and join me on Tuesday and let's celebrate Thanksgiving a little early. At Antono on twenty fifth or twenty five Division. I'll be having coffee with whoever wants to show up at around eleven thirty. Come and go as you please for an hour or so and, uh, we'll talk more. So thanks so much for being here tonight.
Commissioner Kellgar?
Thank you all, uh, especially a big thank you to the staff that gets this all together and helps us, uh, run, uh, this marathon of a day. It's so nice to see everyone come to Commission Night Out. Thank you for your attendance and, um, engagement in this. So first I'd like to address the concerns of safety on the south side that we've, uh, heard from neighbors. We're seeing good data in terms of our crime statistics going down. Uh, but the fear, the, the fear and anxiety that neighbors have, um, expressed to me from the foremost recent acts of violence are real. Um, I think it's gonna take continued intentional and innovative efforts to combat violence. I'm happy that we passed Cure Violence's funding unanimously out of the fiscal committee and out of committee of the whole today. Um, and then we also have an opportunity to continue to look at different innovative efforts, uh. Bolstering our co-response systems or any other best practices that we see from other communities to help combat violence. Um, I also want to, uh, talk about, uh, echo some of the sentiment that my colleagues have shared. On, uh, food accessibility recently. So Baxter Community Center on the south side in the third ward expressed that they had a one hundred percent increase. On the need for their marketplace, their food pantry, one hundred percent. Uh, with the, uh, current dysfunction with Washington, it's ongoing, but currently. About food accessibility, we need everyone in our community to step up. That doesn't always mean a donation of food. Can mean, um, money, uh, donated directly to your local pantry or your time volunteer. When I donated. Uh, recently, there was lots of folks in there, but they needed more folks. So, uh, please think of doing that. And focusing on affordability, I think, is what is incumbent on us as, uh, city leaders and, uh. Uh, I can't think of, uh, which neighbor said it, but you know, the dash. Uh, I intend to keep the dash free. So you know, there's things that we can do, that we can own as a city to keep the city accessible and affordable for all residents and safe. So thanks again.
Uh, Commissioner Yousasi?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, everyone, for coming out tonight and being in the second ward. Thank you for, um, we moved to this day due to some travel that I had last month, so I appreciate that. I know it's the week before Thanksgiving. Um, I wanted to connect on a couple of things as well. Um, we did have our. Mid-year review last week, Thursday, we were able to look at, um, a really overview of, of key areas in the city and, and identify those priorities. And I think that in some ways felt like maybe it might be harder because of the challenges and the scarcity of this funding environment. But in some ways I found us coalescing around a lot of the same ideas and I think recognizing what our role in city government is. Um, thank you to the city manager and city staff. Um, you saw over the last couple of weeks that during this time of uncertainty with the government shutdown. That we paused any shut offs from a water perspective. And so unfortunately. And fortunately, we've had those experiences of working through COVID. Um, the first year I was on commission was twenty twenty and so a lot of those lessons learned about how we might respond to community. Um, we were able to take control of that and that's, you know, that's not something we had to vote on. It's something that can be done. So thank you, city manager, for that. I heard a lot from. Residents and other individuals and other colleagues that shared that. And I think that's really in that same theme, um, that we had over the last couple of days. Where we talked about our water system, how do we connect and coordinate funding that exists at the state level? What are the conversations around affordability? What does our water system look like? As well as today, a conversation about materials management and trying to bring, um, you know, the best experiences get. You know, have our neighborhoods, you know, clean, have people able to dispose of things, have, you know, I, I, I prob, sorry, GRPS. I probably threw away my plate the wrong way, but they had a, a pretty involved, um, system. And so. Um, I think that is a theme that you'll see, uh, across this year and probably for the next couple of years. You saw that as well as we talked about the consolidated plan, um, you know, I'm gonna call you out. Nancy, thank you for coming and you've, you've been a committed member. Um, and so to have you say that the plan is really strong is, I think, you know, I take that as a really gold, gold star. Um, and also it feels like, you know, we never, like, we want to do more and we want to connect, but figuring out where those holes in funding exist. And quite honestly, it's going to be a prioritization. I think some of us who work in this nonprofit world are feeling that either in our own jobs, our own organizations. Um, at the meeting last week when we talked about what are those priorities, one of the other mechanisms I asked if we could pull upon. Was really looking at, um, things that we did around COVID, particularly with La Lucha Fund to support those who were undocumented during. Um, COVID. It was a fund that was established, community, our gov, you know, our city government, um, was able to support that. And just, you know, certainly talking about these social safety nets that exist in community. Uh, we have a lot of people in our community who were not even able to use those social safety nets. And so other safety nets were created in community. So I want us to continue to think about that. Um, and then thank you for our neighbors who came from NICA, um, here in the second ward. And I'm, I look forward to having that conversation with our city manager and, um, other leaders in the city and, um, my colleague. Um, you know, I think our, our goal is, and I've said this before, is, you know, what are the attributes of every single neighborhood? Um, you know, good, you know, I think reminding that all neighborhoods have something to offer. And I've lived in every ward in the city and, um, they, they all have really good things to, to offer. I also wanted to share that this past week, um, on Saturday night, there was a woman who was hit by a car at the corner of Burton and Palace. And, um. I drive up and down that corridor a lot. My sis, I live here on the side and my sister lives on Madison. And, you know, we had a robust conversation about mobility last week. And I just kept thinking about the conversations that we're having and the reality of that woman who was walking with an eight month old baby. And then, you know, the person drove away. They just drove away. They hit somebody and they drove away. And I don't know what all occurred in that moment and, you know, we've gotten reports, you know, and, and this is in our, our public, uh, police report, you know, that the woman has stabilized. But she was just walking probably to get something for her baby and she was hit. And so I think it was just a, another call and a reminder about the importance of certainly, you know, we have investments around. Um, you know, our vital streets and we have, you know, this road funding that's going to come in. And certainly as the commissioner of the second ward, I care about what happens in the second ward. I also have to care deeply what happens on division and I have to care deeply about what happens on Burton. And when I just been driving up and down Burton over the weekend, I'm like, this street is so unsafe. Mayor Legrand has probably like come up with a redesign or something like that because I know you think about these things, Mayor. And, you know, tongue in cheek, but it truly is. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to that continued opportunity on mobility. How do we continue to make streets safer? Um, I know we all have our priorities, um, but I would really say. You know, a woman got hit walking her baby across the street. And so I just want to keep that in mind. I know that was a priority, you know, we talked about ma, uh, city manager, you know, you highlighted that, but. It just has stuck with me since, um, I was chatting with some people on Saturday night. So thank you so much.
Commissioner Robbins?
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Um, I was gonna make the joke earlier that I dread having to talk after Commissioner Knight and then you pump faked me and went to the other side, so. Um, no, just wanted to add my thanks to everybody who made tonight possible. I know. Um, we just see a, the small fraction of the, the efforts, um, that go on behind the scenes to, to make this possible, to have everybody come out. So. Um, just always appreciate people seizing the opportunity to, um, come out and engage in these important discussions too. Um, and then just quickly too, I, I think some of the sentiment that my colleagues have shared too around, you know, what is the role that government plays, um, in our lives? And I think, you know, it can get frustrating, feeling like things aren't moving fast and it's like, you know, there's things that the city should do and, and does best out of anybody. And then there's, you know, things that the city could do. And then there's things that, um, you know, community partners can do better, faster, quicker. And that's, you know, never a dig on, on government, but just the, um, you know, the, the different natures of how these types of organizations work. So, um, always just appreciate that conversation and, um, you know, sometimes it isn't always what people want to hear upfront in, in every situation. Or when they come to the, um, to the city looking to solve a specific problem, but, um, I, someone one time said that part of. Leadership is being able to, you know, define reality and then speak with clarity and, um, you know, candor with people as well too. So always just appreciate, um, that discussion as well. But other than that, it was a great day, a long day, but we had a lot of, um, robust discussions about. Um, lots of important conversations that we're trying to, to balance and, and move forward. And, um, so it's always, you know, sometimes exhausting throughout the day, but rewarding. Once we get to, um, hang up our coats and go home and, uh, be proud of what we accomplished. So with that, have a good night.
Thanks. Uh, City Clerk?
Yeah, two weeks ago, we had a very successful, um, special election for the, uh, Ken, Kennedy Elementary School District Village Vote. Uh, about fifteen percent turnout, so not a high turnout and a good majority of those were by absentee ballots. But it was a very, um, successful day. This is our first election held after, um, changing our precinct lines and opening up some new polling locations and, and, um. Very, um, low impacted, um, and calls from folks that were confused or, and I think some of that communication that we had out, uh, beforehand. Helped, um, our new locations at Hub Zero Seven worked out really well, um, and at Emerald Flat. So those two new locations are gonna be, um, good going forward. Also, thank you to, uh, GRPS for their partnership on Election Day for opening up their buildings, um, having custodial staff there early on today that. Um, students are in the building, but they're still doing in services. And then we had the AV counting, the absentee voter counting board here, um, in the gym. And the law that allows for us to do early tabulation has really been a game changer of when we can make, um, when we can give out, um, results. By, um. By about three o'clock, uh, Tuesday afternoon, we were done tabulating everything that we had and we just had to wait for the end of the day to go pick up the ballots from the drop box at eight o'clock. So right at eight o'clock, the county had all the absentee, ninety seven percent of the absentee results ready to, um, upload and share. So. Um, I, as we get into this time when people want results right away, this gives us a time that we, um, can make sure that everything is done right. We can dot Is and cross Ts and lower, and dot lowercase Js and all that. And, um, but be able to give results in a timely manner too. So I think, um, moving forward as we look at that. And then also, uh, our, we have moved out of our temporary home at five oh nine wealthy. We are, uh, another department that has moved into, um, Scribner. So slowly but surely, everybody's, um, getting over there. And so, um, looking forward to showing off that building to the public. There'll be some stuff coming out about that later. So, um, thank you.
City Attorney?
Well, I'd be remiss if I didn't make any, uh, comment on public safety as we sit here this evening and, and really I felt the synergy around some of the things that we talked about earlier in the day. Uh, one of the, or, or a couple of the themes that I heard earlier during the strategic planning session was rehabilitation. Restorative justice and prevention. And I share with you a message of optimism that I think there are ways that we can do those things better. That we can, uh, dial up and dial in around those three justice related concepts. Uh, just walking in the door before I could even take my coat off, I was having a, a real exciting conversation with our partners at the Urban League. And sharing some ideas on how to make referrals and, and, uh, have better access to programming. Uh, we're meeting with U-Prep students on Thursday i- in our office to talk to them about careers in the legal field. And so I'm excited to hear from you about your expectations and talk through the budget cycle about programming. And, uh, some ideas about restorative justice, rehabilitative justice and, uh, prevention.
City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners for your work today. I want to thank, uh, Grand Rapids Public Schools for their partnership in allowing us to. Use this facility, their staff. I see, uh, Assistant Superintendent in the back of the room. Thank you. As well as the other staff that, uh, as you mentioned, a lot of work goes to, to set these meetings up. Uh, the tech team comes out at least five hours early. Uh, the facilities team is out here three, four hours early and then all the staff setting up and food vendors. And I want to thank Ms. Riley Mukavich for her efforts in coordinating the multiple departments, uh. In our, uh, conversation tonight around safety. I, I will say, um, regarding safety. I recall we recently was, uh, identified by LinkedIn number one city on the rise. In twenty twenty-three. We were identified as the safest city in Michigan, urban city, and among the top thirty in the country. And while those accolades are, are good, it's, it's, uh, always our endeavor to make sure that not only. Uh, the people, uh, are safe, but that they feel safe. And any, anytime there's one fatality, there anytime there's one, uh, fatality by gun or by car, that's tragic, it's trauma. And so we do our best, uh, to make sure that we can have, uh, vision zero, no. Uh, traffic fatalities, no gun violence. Uh, but I do want the public to know. You are in one of the safest urban areas, I would argue, throughout the country. And if you look at, I was just looking at the homicides, uh, in, um, Indianapolis and Detroit and. Uh, well over two hundred in both of those areas and, uh, Flint and Pittsburgh, over forty a year and Milwaukee, over one thirty-two. Um, it, 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 it gives me comfort to know that while we are not perfect yet, we are getting better every year. And we can't get better by ourselves with, uh, city services. Um, I see Pastor Gaddy and Grace Program, Commissioner Knowledge earlier, along with all the other partners, Urban League Cure Violence, we're getting better together. And the programming that we have today, um, we couldn't even, uh, contemplate a few years ago. And so I'm, I'm excited about continuing to get better, uh, together. Uh, I also appreciate, uh, the efforts of the staff. I'll talk more about this, uh, at another venue about the strategic planning efforts, but other good news and all, with all the fiscal uncertainty that's happening at the federal level. Um, your local government is, uh, very dependable on services. Well, we can get better in terms of delivery, but. Uh, you can count on, uh, the quality services being available to the public every day. And I wanted to commend the Water Department on their recent, um, uh, bond rating for water, wastewater, double A, double A plus. Uh, not only is the quality of the water good, but also our ability to, uh, take care of our infrastructure. And repay our debt services, uh, on our capital, uh, investments are well done. So I want to thank the Water Department for that. And, um, look forward to seeing some of you tomorrow at the joint school liaison meeting. Thank you.
So thanks, everyone, for coming. Um. I, we've all just been through sort of a traumatic event with the federal government. Um, I had to explain to somebody younger than me that when I was young, this didn't happen every year or so. Um, didn't used to be this way. The government, the federal government didn't say, well, maybe we're not gonna pay for our aviation system anymore. Or maybe we're not going to give food to people who need it. Um, and I think this time was worse than any I can remember in terms of the real human stressors. Um. That is one more, I don't want to say nail in the coffin, but something like it. It's one more wound. Uh, to general public trust in government. And I think that our. Our society only ever ultimately runs on trust. That's why neighborhood associations are so important. That's why. Bringing the commission out into the community is so important. That's why seeing each other face to face in as many contexts as possible is, I think, our best hope for preserving and strengthening democracy. That's another way of saying that I'm happy today that we moved forward on a discussion of something near and dear to my heart. And that is, uh, financial disclosure by elected officials. Because it's part of that conversation of how do we build trust? We have to model transparency. We have to model openness. We have to figure out always as government officials, how can we be more open? How can we be more open? How can we be more transparent? And that's a, it's a journey. It's a, it's a matter of making incremental progress, but I'm proud that the city is having the conversation about increasing transparency and knowledge for the citizens of what their elected officials are up to and how that relates to their work in government, because I think I'm convinced that more transparency is the only way, and more trust, and building that trust is the only way we're going to get through, through where we are right now as a country. So glad about that. Commissioner Usasi, you're absolutely right. I'm not going to belabor it, but there are a number of streets in town that I name as unofficial highways. We have, we have, and we all know what those streets are and we all know what the sections are. And you can't really have vibrant communities when you have people, when you have cars going at lethal speeds past people's houses. And a lot of those unofficial highways have people living on them. Burton Street has houses on it, and human beings live in those houses. And just to remind everyone here, the odds that you will live by getting hit by, at 35 miles an hour are about 10%. You get hit at 25 miles an hour is about a 90% survival rate. So the difference between 35 miles an hour and 25 miles an hour is absolutely critical. So all of our conversations about transportation and mobility, what we have to be able to do, I'm convinced, is name the fact that we have to slow traffic down to sub-lethal speeds. And if we do that, a lot of other exciting things will come out of that. We'll find that we'll have more vibrant business districts on Leonard. We'll find that we'll have, that people will feel safer in the community because they won't have these big metal boxes going by at lethal speeds. And I think that we're going to have a much healthier and happier community if we can make progress towards that goal. So for me, at the end of the day, what I would say about transportation is my secondary objective in transportation is to get somewhere. My primary objective is to not die in the process. So a city that makes us all safer while we go about our business is the city I hope we can all be living more and more into all the time. Thanks for coming.